Now. This is the November 8th, open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees being held via hybrid format, allowing remote participation under Massachusetts Commonwealth Act adopted during the pandemic state of emergency. Roll call. First, I'll take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, and persons anticipated beyond the agenda are present and can hear me. So trustees, Anna Geraldo Scher.
Yeah.
Jay Fialpa.
Here.
I'm Harkins.
Yeah.
Carol Thomas. Rob Pettit.
Present.
Airheart Grace.
Here.
And myself, KK. So for library staff tonight, we have Director Kim Hewitt.
I am here.
Director Dimitri Karyakis.
I'm here.
Technology Specialist Danielle Tower.
Yes.
Technical Services Supervisor Rand Cronin. And I don't think we have Gay Allen tonight, right? We have Jenna. Jenna. White. You're here.
I'm here.
And okay, and for the Library Foundation of Needham, we have Beth Hammerstein. Stan. Hammerstein.
Thanks. Hi.
Great. This meeting is being recorded. Remote participants, please mute your phone or computer when not speaking. If there is a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at 7:00 PM. October 10. I'd like to request a voice call to all the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:03 PM. Can I have a motion?
Certainly.
Send it. Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Meeting of Needham Board of Library Trustees is now in session. We should take a look at the minutes. Oh, first of all, public comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment, it would need to be in person, not by remote. According to our rules. Any. I don't hear or see any member of the public, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the minutes. Okay. So anyone have any comments or Jay, I assume that this came and you've.
Yeah, I have just a couple of very small things, you know. Faith does a great job and I get back to her with some comments and they all came in. I think there's a couple that I would just add for clarity purposes, I noticed. In section three, where it says on page three, Mariel Harlow donated. Do you want, I guess you can't see that, but I would, I would put that too, little TO in quotes, and then put the TWO at the end in quotes.
I don't see section three on page three.
Not on page three.
Page one.
Does everyone see what I'm saying? Where it says donated two chairs was corrected to read two.
I was putting quotes around the words TO and TWO.
I thought that would be more clear, but. And then I think in the next sentence, just grammatically, I, I don't think you need the, the, there, it should, it should be on page four, an extra dollar sign, et cetera, was removed. You don't need the there was after page four. But Faith really does an outstanding job of collecting the information and distilling it into the minutes.
Faith here tonight?
I am. It's a couple of small things. On page three. The information, the first sentence of number seven, statistical report really is part of the financial reports. It just needs to get moved above the number seven. Heading. Is that clear?
So it's the sentence that says that FY 2022 final question is presented.
Right.
Just move that up to the height of the sentence.
Move that above the number seven heading and four under state aid. My, my recollection that the vote to reallocate stated money for last, let's see. In this sentence above, the bolded one that says Carol made a motion, you have the rate for the, you have the rate for the consultant for the artwork and I thought it was an estimated $1,000 to appraise the art. Is that correct? It is a contract. It's contractual. It's an hourly.
It is an hourly. Yes, you charge the hour.
I think it was an estimated $1,000 to appraise. On page six. Oh, this is, this is picky. Number 14. That word should be affect A at the C to.
Yep.
One sentence.
Affect and effect.
We should have proposals don't bring the library into being.
It's not. So that's all I have.
And I like how we have the director's report attached as an appendix, which I think makes a lot of sense. And the, in this case, the trustee summary is also attached to the appendix, which makes sense. So any other minute comments to the minutes? Okay. So can I have a motion to accept? Second, all in favor of accepting the minutes from October 11th, 2022?
Aye.
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 Close. Okay. Passing unanimously. Minutes are accepted. Okay, we have a wonderful, I'm looking, I'm really looking forward to the presentation of Things. Ken will introduce Rand.
Yes. So sad that I can't be there with you, but this is Rand Cronin, who you've heard a lot about. She is the head of technical services. She's been with us since April 1st. Literally, her first day was our staff day. And she and her team have been working extremely hard on the Library of Things, so she's gonna give you a little bit of kind of a behind the scenes look at what we've got and what they did to get the collection out.
So the Library of Things collection is one of this year's biggest projects.
Rand, you know what? I think the owl might have a soft voice.
Oh, okay.
In your car from the owl.
Um, can we move the owl? Can we move the owl? Danielle, can we move this?
Um, you can move it.
Thank you. I can talk louder.
Rand, I can hear you when you, if you speak.
I am a soft speaker. I'm sorry. Um, the Library of Things collection is non-traditional items that are available for the Needham community to borrow. It includes tools, technology, and other fun equipment. There are 103 items in this collection at the moment, but there are 53 unique items. So we have, you know, multiple knitting needles. So we count one as part of the 53 and then multiple in 103. And you can see a list provided to the trustees that I've given everyone tonight. This list is also available online at the needhamlibrary.org/te. So I have a few examples of things that I would like Danielle to show us. Danielle, you could show us the first image.
We're just seeing the file directory.
Yeah.
You might have to switch to the image or just show your whole screen rather than just the file directory. Application.
Okay. So this is a cricket machine. This can be used to, basically it's a die cutter, but you can make cards and you can do vinyl and you can do decorations on all of your materials. So this is one of the items that we had to process and catalog. Danielle, you can move to the next image. So I'm gonna show you a bunch of things. The next one is going to be record player. We had a lot of interesting processing that we had to do because normally we're set up to do regular materials, AV. So all of this is very neat and a lot of fun. We definitely had an interesting time in technical services. I have a couple more images that I would like to show you of things that we set up. Yeah. So Danielle already having trouble displaying them? Okay. Record player. And then the next image would be a digital converter. Perfect. All right. One forward. That's a digital converter. So this takes, you know, if you have a camcorder, a VJ player, it can take that and turn it into digital imagery and save it to your computer at home. And, you know, take all of those treasured family films and turn them into something digital that you can share with family. And then the next item that we have is a digital camera. These are just a few of examples of things. As you can see from this picture, it's got the camera. Everything in the image is labeled, has the barcode on it, has a tag. I'm gonna get into a little bit of the details of that. And the next image Danielle is a metal detector, which I built on a very stormy Friday. And I was like, I, this is my job. Okay. I'm building a metal detector. We're gonna have lightning strike outside, so it was interesting for me. The next image Danielle is a Roku. So these are just a few of the 103 items that we've added to this collection with, from the generosity of friends. So the Library of Things items are available for patrons to borrow and return here only at the Needham Public Library. These items don't go out in delivery to other libraries in the network due to their unusual shapes and sizes. The metal detector especially. In order to borrow an item, a patron must have, must be in good standing with a Minuteman Network card. The 18 years or older must receive a copy of the lending agreement, which is the last page of the packet that I gave to everyone. And must pick up and return the item to this library. Patrons may borrow an item of their choosing for a one-week loan, which can be renewed two times if there are no other holds placed on it. So they can have it for a maximum period of three weeks before it does have to come back. And as I said earlier, we had a really interesting time processing all of these items in technical services. You know, we have a streamlined process for print or AV and the other like usual suspects in the library. So we took time to count, label, organize, and pack each of these items for processing. And the first example that I have here of the unique item was the toolkit. We took some items that had many pieces and we simplified the process. Staff have to weigh this item in with a small kitchen scale that's behind circulation because there's 57 pieces here and I didn't want to have everyone spend time counting it. So in the cataloging and on the box itself, Danielle, if you could hit the next image. It has a little weight on one side of it that says how much this item weighs when it's on the scale. So ease the process. You can hit the next image. Thank you. So this is Raspberry Pi. So we built a very small computer called Raspberry Pi and loaded it with the necessary software onto several small micro SD parts, so it can be swapped in and out when it comes back. So patron uses it with the first micro SD part, then it comes back and you swap it out for a clean one and we clean up on the meantime, just to make sure that whatever project they were working on is right. The device. And Danielle, if you could go to the next image. This is technical services upstairs. There's a dome tent that has eight people. We had a heck of a time trying to build it and Dimitri's leg is in the picture for scale. So one of the young adult librarian also helped me set this up because I was like, what are we doing? What are we doing with this? I'm not a tent builder. So we definitely had a good time. Danielle, if you go on to the next image. We also, a little bit smaller than I was intending, but we made a tag and I have an example here as well for each item in this collection. And basically what this tag tells the patrons is the name of the item, the contents list. So they have a list of everything that's in here. It has loan rolls, which I just previously explained. It's a one-week loan, two possible renewals. It also says that it needs to be picked up here and dropped off here. It can't go to the other network libraries. It needs to come back here due to delivery. And then it also has a replacement fee on it. And that replacement fee is to just be completely upfront with the patrons, that these are slightly more pricey items and we just want them to know when they take them out that, you know, the responsibility lays with them. And it does, you know, need to come back. If pieces go missing when they come back, like we do with DVDs, multiple series, audiobooks that have multiple CDs in it. It basically goes on the mending part and we try and solve that problem. Some things can be easy. If a table goes missing, that's something that we can easily replace. Some things are not easy. If the entire Nintendo Switch goes missing, well, then the patron is going to have to pay for that. So, but we're trying to be as transparent as possible to make sure that everyone who's participating in borrowing the Library of Things collection understands, I understand this. We also made, Danielle, if you can move to the next image. We also made a display for each item. That's the tag that she made bigger. Thank you so much. And then we had a display for each one. So this is a DVD insert. It just gets stuck in an empty DVD case and the display is out in front of circulation right now. But this is so patrons can come in and understand all of the pieces of the collection. The collection lives behind a circulation desk and because of that, patrons can't go through it and browse it, but they can use this to take a look at it in the display. And it has all of the information that's on the tag as well as a little descriptor about what that item does. I think the next image Danielle is just of the display outside. Next room. And then lastly, we organized the shelves behind the circulation desk, which is the next image. Which everyone can just kind of see if they look out the door, but we basically reorganized the shelving so that the call number for any of these items is its shelf and box location, so that it's easy for staff to find it. And then we have a few images from our Meet the Things event, which happened last Thursday, November 11th. We celebrated with a launch party where staff borrowed an item from the collection and displayed a skill or talent. So here Danielle is showing off the yarn winder, which I think looks terrifying, but really effectively winds this ball of yarn, so it's useful for knitters to use. And then the next image is Dimitri flying the drone outside. It was pretty sunny out on that side, so we were having a hard time seeing it. And then the last image that I have for you for this event was Luanne showed off her skill with the sewing machine and she was working on a pant leg right there. And then the other few things that she sewed were these little pillows that had all astronauts or space themes on them while we were in. So this is a patron looking on as the sewing machine is used. So it was a really fun opportunity to kind of show off the items in the collection. The last thing that I have for you is that already it's three weeks and we have had 58 checkouts of this collection. So it's doing very well. And that's including like three weeks of time for people to actually use it. And I brought the switch because it's one of my favorites, so I just wanted to kind of show it off. Really nice cases where they all fit back in there. And I don't know if anyone likes that, but I really do. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Sorry, what is that? Oh, it's a video game console. Basically, it's a Nintendo Switch.
So first of all, awesome job to, to you and to everybody who made this happen. I've gotten so much feedback. Positive feedback from folks in the community and in speech, and it's wonderful. And I think it really, really kind of got the message across to folks about, you know, libraries can be, they're books, but that there's so much more. So it's, it's really exciting. One question, I know it's still really early days, but for, in the future, for adding items to this collection? And I'm sure you'll be getting requests to add items. How would you consider that? Is that gonna be a regular thing or obviously the space constraints of a lot of this stuff?
Yeah. So I think we definitely want to take all suggestions that come in and evaluate them. Part of what I want to build is a, is a survey that goes out with the lending agreement that just asks like, hey, what did you borrow? How did you like it? Do you have any suggestions? Just short and sweet so that we get kind of a little bit of feedback if they had any trouble with the device, what we could do to kind of help it on that side. But then also, you know, curate a list. And as I've been doing it and telling people, I already have a list started for the next round. When it comes to managing the amount of space that we have, I think what we'll definitely look at is circulation stats to see what's really popular. I would think of this first round as the test bed. Let's see what Needham as a community is really interested in borrowing. And then come back to the table and do like a second round to try and fill requests and also flesh out like, if this is really popular, maybe we get another one. That's what I think. That would be how I would evaluate the next round and obviously have a lot of staff input because they are the ones who are hearing all of the suggestions as well.
Yeah, this is incredible. It's really awesome. And all the work's put into it. It's amazing. I'm very curious about when you're offering somebody a switch or something else that can be complicated technologically, what does that look like when it comes to patrons asking for, how to use this device?
Yeah. So part of what we really need to build, so our, our website is kind of the first step. And anything that's particularly complicated, there's a bunch of different tags, but this one is Need Help Getting Started. It directs you right to the website. Because underneath the website is a description of the item, but also the user guides videos. It's a good place to start if you're unfamiliar with a device. And then I would think the layering piece of that would be involving reference in helping triage. So reference offers tech appointments where you can sit down with someone and basically walk them through how to do something with their phone or the lydia, like all of the things that we offer technologically at the library. And this would kind of add on to that a little bit. It's to, I borrowed it, let's, let's sit down, I'll walk you through it. The switch is pretty easy. Some of the other things that might be a little bit more difficult that involve things at home would kind of involve building out resources as well, kind of like a how-to guide. But the, the user guides, the instructions online and the videos are a really good start for people. The cricket, for example, is one that uses a software called Design Space and you have to download it. And so starting from the website, going straight to Design Space, downloading it and getting started. The interesting thing about that one is we have to think about anything that, you know, if someone logs into their Nintendo account, that's something that we want to check and make sure isn't happening so that other people don't play with their Nintendo account. But this is logged into ours and it's locked and I have parental controls to it. So I'm trying to keep that from happening so that people are just using the cartridge games that we now are operating with the Vala family brands. So we have a bunch of those. But yeah, it does involve thinking about any of the technology pieces and what we can. Going back to the cricket as an example, when you log into the design space, you log into your own account and your own version of design space so that you can store your images or designs there and it's not attached to the device itself, which makes it so much easier. It means if someone borrows it, has to bring it back because someone has a hold on it, but then continues working on their design when they get it back. It's all saved under their own personal account.
Rand, I, I took out the cricket and I downloaded the design space and within a week, because people were waiting for it, I had to, you know, use the website videos. I learned how to use the design software. I designed a bunch of pieces. I produced them all bang, 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 very quickly. So if I could do it, you know, it can be done. Jay?
I have a question. First, again, I, I, I think this is just great. The conception and execution is just very impressive and exactly the sort of thing I think many of us were looking for as we reimagine what our library can be. And we, I, I, I thank all of you for your efforts. I'm curious, as I look on the website and I see you have a whole new section relating to the Library of Things. It, was it, with regard to the website, was it very easy to update the website to include all, all of the information about the Library of Things? Is that, is that a good situation in terms of the arrangements with the website producers? Or did, did it work well or did it work not so well in a way that we need to think about?
I actually think it worked really well. So we use Sterling for the backend of our website, which is based off of WordPress and a combination of Lily. I'm very familiar with that because I've worked with them before. So getting that all up and running is super easy with Danielle's house as well.
Great. I'm happy to hear that.
I think it's really good to have something that you can easily update that reflects video. A lot of the ways that people are now learning how to use things is by watching a YouTube video and getting your hands into it. We also can update the website to reflect some of the collections that we have. So Creative Bug is a database that we have that can help support the arts and crafts materials as well. So, you know, we can bring into our regular collections and to help support what's going on with our library.
Anna? So I want to echo my colleague in congratulating you and the staff. It's, you know, it's great. I, I am already making a list of whatever. Um, so in the 58 checkouts that you mentioned, were there any instances where the parts needed to be replaced or, you know, or charges to the borrowers? Any? I'm just curious.
Um, I haven't had any charges to borrowers yet, so I'm really hoping that that continues. Small things we can easily replace with the supporting budget, so I'm not entirely worried about that stuff. Um, there was, the cricket was missing its user manual, but I reprinted it and it's all set. So that was one.
There now?
Yeah. Well, that was one thing that was missing and is now fully.
I, I reported it, but it was missing.
Yeah. I, I got the report. I fixed it.
And what is the process? So if somebody comes back with that, a part is missing and they're, oh, I, I just paid for you. So do we get their credit card information ahead of time or, you know, sometimes when you borrow in other places, they, you have to leave your card or your ID or something. So what, what is the process for that?
So for us, the process of replacement is actually a fee that's assigned to their card. And they can actually pay it online through, by logging into their Minuteman account. That's probably the easiest and safest way to do it.
So they get, they will get an email?
Yeah. We are gonna give them time to see if they can find the pieces though. So when they bring it back and it's missing a piece, what we would normally do with anything, with any of our regular collections is call the patron, inform them, give them time to go search, see if they can find it, bring it back to us. And depending on the item, it goes onto a part in circulation that's just like pieces that need to be fixed. And basically I would go down there and assess what's missing. And at that point, see if I can get it back into circulation. If it's something small like the user manual, I just reprinted it. It's all set. And at that point, see if I can get it back into circulation. If it's something small like the user manual, I just reprinted it. It's all set. Missing, easy missing, maybe like HDMI cables, something like that, easy to fix and just get it out there. It's going to be the things that are like the key piece of the collection that's going to be more of the, yeah, I'm so sorry, we noticed that this was missing or it hasn't come back on time. Could you please take a look for it and get it to the library so that all of our community can borrow it?
Right. That's great. Are there any items that are the most popular at this time?
I think that I was surprised by what immediately caught a hold on me. And the thing, the first thing that went out was the Tony Box, which is a little, it's a music player, storytime device for kids that doesn't have a screen. And so it's just like box and you put these little figures on top of it and it plays. And that was the first thing that went out, which, to be fair, I'm not actually surprised by. I just had never known what this thing was until I just got a look. And then the second thing that had an immediate pull on it was the camera drone, which I was not surprised by.
Yeah, yeah, I was wondering. That's on my list.
It's a lot of fun, but it sounds a little creepy.
That's tricky. We've lost, we've unfortunately lost several buns and trees. So that's why I was asking about.
Yeah, so we're part of the replacement program, so that'll help mitigate a little bit of that. But I think we think of this as like investing in community barriers. We do want people to be responsible.
Though given Anna's past history, I'm not sure that, I think I make a motion that we don't let her borrow our drone.
Hey, it was her choreo, by the way, not me.
Thank you, Ran. This is amazing. And we are all on board and pleased with you developed.
Yeah.
So. So we have director's report, report next on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Ran. I appreciate you coming by. Okay, so yes, the director's report. Today is my one-year anniversary of being the library director of Needham. Actually, I realized this morning. And I think we've done a lot in a year. I'm excited about year two. As you heard, the Library of Things collection just launched. That was October 17th. And I just, you know, I want to make sure it's said out loud to just that, you know, there's a huge thank you owed to technical services in particular and also in circulation for the successful launch of the collection. It's very new. So, you know, we don't have a lot of trends or anything yet, but it's been fun to see what's going out and what's not. And what we might want to promote a little bit more and things like that. So really good opportunities moving forward with that. But we also launched two other collections over this past month, which again, tech services just, you know, really has been knocking it out of the park. And this month, they'll get to relax and just do their normal day-to-day jobs. But we launched the Adult Graphic Novels Collection and the Video Games Collection. And you'll see those now by the YA section, like the teen area and the biographies. It's kind of sandwiched between them on the second floor. The Library of Things collection got some nice coverage on NBC Boston on the 26th of October. And there was an accompanying article, which will be, you know, is in my director's report, is a link. And that'll be in the appendix for the minutes for tonight. So that's all over the place, which was really just fortunate for us. We also had Tatiana Swanson, the Assistant Director of HR, come over during that interview and she answered in Spanish. So on Telemundo, they'll have a piece about it as well, which is really lovely. We began working with Colleen Fesco, the Fine Arts Appraiser, that was mentioned last month. Although we didn't mention her name, that's who it is if you didn't know at this point. She is working on appraising the Wyeth collection and a few other pieces. And this is kind of that first step that we need in order to really work out what our lending policy should be. We need them to be appropriately appraised. And it had been about seven years since it had last happened. There are some exciting, you know, just staff accomplishments this past month, too. Sarah Breen completed the New England Library Leadership Symposium Emerging Leaders Program, which was, you know, a pretty intensive, I think, three-month thing where they met every week and then had a kind of full-day event at a conference recently. So that was really exciting. And Robin Flynn held eight tech help appointments. And we got a lot of positive feedback, like people taking the time to actually write or mention it to her supervisor and things like that. So it's really lovely to see that happen. We completed, or not, we Digital Commonwealth completed our yearbook digitization, which I mentioned that we sent out a few months back. And we'll receive our physical materials shortly. We have not yet received them, but you can go to archive.org to see the yearbooks that are now digital. Sarah Breen, Dimitri Kiriakis, and I all attended the New England Library Association Conference about three weeks ago now? Two weeks ago, actually? Sorry. They had some really great programs around topics like collection development, DEI strategies, legal issues in libraries, very specific stories about dealing with book challenges, and some programs around revamping interior spaces, which were interesting. So that was great to be able to go to and see people in here, new and innovative ideas and kind of just thinking a little bit differently about some of the ideas we already talk about all the time. The Children's Room had a bunch of fun programming this past month. They had goat yoga, which even though it got rescheduled due to rain happening, we still had 42 people participate and they all loved it. There will be photos and things online. And if you haven't seen goat yoga before, it's what you think it is. It is doing yoga with goats climbing on you and around you. And there are lots of YouTube videos of goat yoga, so I encourage you to check it out if you've never witnessed it. No, outside. We use the, what do you call it? The memorial, like the gazebo across the street. So we also participated in this year's Spooky Walk, which is a trick-or-treat event that happens. It's put on by Parks and Rec, so it was nice to kind of just be part of that. We had some Halloween craft programs that were really popular. Veronica McCarthy had 51 people participate in her craft program. And we've also seen a lot of regular use of the steam room since we've reopened it, which has been really lovely to hear that, you know, it's gaining traction again and people are realizing that it's open and using it. We also updated the Story Walk that's at Defazio Park and created a scavenger hunt to go along with the new story that's there. And we had representation at the farmer's market where we gave out trick-or-treats and plushies for people with food allergies, which I thought was such a lovely idea and really like inclusive. And they also brought a craft for children to complete there as well. For personnel, we had to repost our part-time children's librarian position. We had offered the openings to two jobs and, sorry, to two candidates. And within like the week that we had offered them, one got an offer she couldn't refuse from her current employer. And then the other one had already accepted a different job. So we're trying to move quickly because the market is just crazy right now. People have a lot of options and yeah, so we'll see. We're excited about reposting it and getting a few more few more candidates in the mix. And we're also in the process of hiring part-time reference librarians and those interviews happen next week. Then we're on to the gifts report. So the Friends of the Needham Free Public Library collected $1,000, $1,079 in memory of Ruth Cunningham from her friends and family. Sandra Boynton donated 53 English language learning books, which is a wonderful donation. And that was an estimated value of $795. There was an.
Is that the noted children's author, Sandra Boynton?
You know, I didn't look into it, but I wondered. I meant to look it up before tonight, actually, and forgot about it completely, but let me know if you look it up. We also got an anonymous gift of From Scratch, Adventures in Harvesting, Hunting, Fishing, and Foraging on a Fragile Planet, which was an estimated value of $27. Bill Littlefield gave a copy of his book Mercy, which is an estimated value of $21. Kiran Tiare Thomas donated a copy of Clementine, which was an estimated value of $15. And Rita Bart, Park, Bark, sorry, gave a DVD set of Faulty Towers, which was an estimated value of $56. So those were the gifts and I would look to have a motion to approve the gift list.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Your second. All in favor, accepting the gifts? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, pass unanimously.
Okay. So on to buildings and ground. The Department of Parks and Forestry trimmed down the trees along Highland Ave and along the north side of the building by the staff entry. The AC chiller was shut down for the season, of course, and now it's really hot again in the building. And Highland Ave foyer was painted. Angel had noted that it just needs some finishing touches, but overall was done. And the electrician was here to work on lighting inside Bosworth and Wyeth rooms. There was a pending item as of the time this report was sent out, that the door on on Highland Ave is broken. Some children removed the brass handle that pulled the door open. It wasn't anything to do with the lock. It's like the C-shaped handle. That has since been completed. It now has the handle. So we had to leave the door open during our open hours, like propped open, I mean. And now we won't need to do that anymore. So we're glad to have that done.
Thing that we miss our old Needham times because in the paper, there would always be brass handle stolen off the front door of the library or ice cream stolen from the, those kind of odd little thefts and vandalisms.
Yeah.
Be able to read about them.
I don't know if I'd. So the lights on the first floor by large print are still pending. The sink area inside the pantry is still pending and the alarms on staircase A and B are still pending. And sorry, not in the room. So any questions on any of the things I went over in my entire report so far?
Carol?
I just, I wondered, what did, what happened with the lighting in the Bosworth and the Wyeth rooms? I wasn't aware there was a problem.
I think they've just been replacing a lot of the different lighting fixtures, just updating them like normal wear and tear things. Sorry, what was that?
Anyone else?
Oh, sorry. I thought Carol said something else. Sorry.
Oh, no, thank you.
Oh, got it, got it. Sorry. Okay. So for the financial reports, we had regular monthly spending of Canopy and Overdrive in state aid. For Canopy, we spent $634. For Overdrive, we spent $1,796. For the trust funds, we had a disbursement of $1,293 for an annual subscription to Comics Plus database, which is a new database that we're offering. And we want to see how that does this year. You know, we'll determine around this time next year whether we're keeping it or not. But it looks really fun and it is a different style of thing than we typically have on offer. The Hatch Fund had a disbursement of $2,867. A lot of that was for really children's playaways, wonder books and launchpads, as well as large print books from Centerpoint. A good chunk of it, $2,020, was for young adult books from Baker &amp; Taylor. And then also some children's books from Baker &amp; Taylor. The PDF, the Permanent Donation Fund had a disbursement of $5,599. You know, a good chunk of that was for adult fiction books from Baker &amp; Taylor and for launchpads and cables from Findaway and YA books from Baker &amp; Taylor. And then some additional spending on large print books from Sendgauge and children's movies from Baker &amp; Taylor.
Quick question, Kim, just on the library trust funds. How do you choose which funds to access for the various items?
Based on the planned spending document that the trustees vote on each year. And some of them have certain restrictions anyhow, so that planned spending document is based on that anyhow. So then month to month, we just are looking to spend those out. And right now, selectors are supposed to be spending out the trust fund money that was appropriated to them so that we can sort of zero it out before we're asking for the next or bringing up the next planned spending document. So yes, good, bigger chunks of money, I think, than what we've tended to see month to month.
Can I ask another question? Kim, can you remind me, where do the planned spending figures show up in the encumbered?
Yes.
Funds expendable?
In the encumbered.
Okay, so it's as though it's spent if it's on your planned spending planned spending request?
The plans, when we get, when we put together the planned spending, it comes from the available interest and the available balance for spending. And we put together a list of what we think we might like to spend and then you vote on that and then we move it to the encumbered line.
All right, so it's all those are not necessarily exactly specific, but they've been asked for in the planned spending, everything in encumbered. One way or another, it's either specifically approved or it's in the planned spending?
Yes. Yeah, except for the public, except for the Permanent Donation Fund, which, as it comes in, you know, for specific things usually.
I had a question about the, I had a question about the launchpads. Is that, do you have programming that goes along with that? Or is that just kind of kids can take it out and they take it with them to stay in the library? How does that work?
No, we have a huge collection of them in the children's room to check out and they're really popular. Kids really love them. And so they just have different programs on them. They're often on a theme where they'll have different kind of like apps. Like it's essentially like an iPad sort of thing with specific stuff on it. And actually, like, it's got like, I'll show you one of my hard drives. You know, it's got like this like bumper kind of material around it. So it's not just like a device that you give a kid.
We're just growing our existing collection of those with these.
Yeah. Yes, because they're very popular, but they're also fairly expensive. So yeah.
So either hardware plus software, each one is equipped with the software, the kind of pocket or something? It's the machine plus the?
Yes, yes. So the device comes like pre-programmed with a number of things on it. Yeah. And those things on it don't change. So, you know, if you want a different theme or whatever, we have to, you know, we get a whole new device for that. Okay. Okay, move on to statistics. Okay, so statistics were down from August to September. I'm not really sure what was going on there. I don't know if everyone's just busy back at school. But we saw less people in the library overall. Study room use and program attendance were basically the only real numbers that saw an increase in September from August. So I'm encouraged about the programming attendance, at least, you know, people are coming in. But I'll be very curious to see what our numbers are for October, too. And.
Like it's for the same number.
Website is saying.
For September.
Exactly.
Same number.
8,419.
Let me ask Deborah to take another look at that. Yeah. Interesting. That might have been just a typo from her, so.
I don't know. Really how, I can't recall how many hits we used to get, but I find I'm using the website a lot more than I ever used to. I find I'm using the website a lot more than I ever used to. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's the place to go where it used to be so inconvenient that you almost rather try anything than. Very accessible.
Yeah, you just search and you will.
Yeah. I agree. I wasn't here when the old library website existed, but I've seen others that are part of their, um, town government site, and they are not fun to use, so.
It's working really well.
Yeah, we have a lovely website.
The fact that you folks, the staff, are taking advantage of it so well, that's what makes it really, yeah, a place to get your, the information you need.
Yes, I've been pleased with the upkeep, so, thank you. Okay, um, so may I move on to new business then?
That would be good.
Okay, so, um, in front of you, you should have the holiday closing, the proposed closing list. Um, for the most part, this matches what we've done in previous years, with the exception of Patriots' Day. There's one additional day that we're asking for because we looked at how many people were coming in on any of those three-day weekends, and that Sunday in particular was one that, um, you know, almost nobody comes in, and it doesn't feel worth staffing, and our staff, you know, often don't have the same kind of, um, holiday weekends that Town Hall might have, things like that, so we're looking for another opportunity to just have like where it might make sense to have one more day that it, you can count on having off. Um, the other thing was that because Independence Day falls on a Tuesday, fireworks and festivities will be on Monday. And when we look back at the Exchange Club, they start their festivities around five-thirty for things like pony rides and whatever programming that they do, like kind of a fair sort of thing, uh, from my understanding. Um, so I'm proposing that we would close at four-thirty, which is fairly in line with what you've done in previous years when Independence Day fireworks were happening on a weekday. Um, and don't think there are other huge deviations. Um, the last working day before Christmas is one that the town has, and so we also have to have. Um, but our last working day before Christmas is not Friday, so it, you know, it's Saturday, so we would just close early then instead of two half-days in a row. And New Year's Eve is, you know, we're closed unless New Year's needum happens, which has been, I think, the way it's traditionally been on the calendars that I've seen, so, I don't know if there are. Oh, and then, um, you know, I did have on here the request for two staff days, uh, one in the fall and one in the spring. Because I think it's just extremely important, and we don't get a lot of time with so many part-timers on staff. We really want to make sure we have time where everyone could be together for a full day of professional development training.
Troubled by seeing the number of days that the library is closed to the public increasing. As we say, we're trying to be more accessible and supporting people that don't have other places to do their work or to, um, you know, use the technology or just a place to be when, you know, the holiday isn't their holiday and there's nothing open. Um, it, it troubles me to see that number rising up. The Juneteenth holiday is a new one, so that increased it. Of course, the staff day we had last year was new, but it was one, now it's two. Um, Patriots' Day, I don't ever recall having two days off for Patriots' Day. So some of these, I'm wondering if maybe we couldn't rethink, um, how to increase. And particularly, you know, when there's a long stretch, that affects people more, even though it's a, it's, um, good for the staff, sometimes I think the compromise is too much, like on the, the last working day before Christmas, Saturday. That's not even Christmas Eve, it's a day before Christmas Eve.
Right.
Probably necessary to close it early that day when Saturday is a big day for the library often. I don't know whether that particular day will be, would be, but, um, I, I have to say that it's a concern to me.
So, to speak to Juneteenth and the last working day before Christmas, those are both required by the town. They're not ones that I get to pick. Like the town, Town Hall puts out their calendar, and they say, these are our holidays.
Ours don't always track theirs. Is this an exception or?
I can't hear it.
I don't see that usually our calendar completely tracks the town's calendar, because they're normally not open on the weekend, so.
Right, which is why we have a couple additional holidays from them.
Yeah.
Like, theirs is, theirs includes Juneteenth and the last working day before Christmas, which has always been, the last working day before Christmas has always been on the library's calendar as well. So, I'm just following that tradition. And I will say, you know, I counted this year's library calendar, and we had twenty days off, and this one would be twenty-one. So.
I, you know, I counted sixteen full days off, but I just counted the number of, uh, full day closures, um, on the last several years, and I had twenty-twenty with sixteen. Twenty-twenty-one, nobody seems to have that one. Twenty-twenty-two with sixteen full days closed. And it's the proposal for twenty-two.
I get nineteen through the, um, twenty-two.
Are you counting fo- full days closed? I just counted, I didn't count the part.
Yeah, full days. I counted one where we're, um, maybe closing at five instead of five-thirty on a, a Saturday.
Can, can I make a comment?
Sure, yes, Jay.
So I'm sensitive to, to all of these reasonable concerns, both on, on the part of Kim for serving the staff and developing the staff and being fair to the staff, and also uh, to the concern Carol, Carol raised, and, and and I, I'm tempted to, to, to defer to the staff, but if we're looking for one day, Kay mentioned, you know, or, or maybe it was Carol, that especially an extended period of time. You know, if there's maybe one day to trade, perhaps it would be the, the Saturday before Labor Day. So instead of having three days closed in a row, it might be open for that Saturday as, as, as a possible way to, you know, to, to, to come down in the middle, but in terms of balancing the concerns, but I, I don't feel, you know, I just mentioned that as a possible sort of, uh, possible solution to what, what seems to be, how do you, how do you balance two sets of, you know, equally, equally reasonable concerns?
Yes, uh, here's my institutional memory.
Okay.
This was in the base twenty, twenty-five years ago. We talked about Saturday before Labor. And then one time, we found out that, uh, uh, that the, uh, when the schools opened before Labor, we thought, we thought that we should have the library open on Saturday. We did, found very little because, in all honesty, was this year, even though school started before. It, it is, and I don't, I don't think it's, we're, we're not losing anything by having a closed Saturday and Sunday.
And I'm, I'm comfortable hearing that, you know, I'm, I'm not pushing to, 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 to open it on Saturday, given that, 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 that sense that you have, Tom.
But if it's possible to check two things, you know, think again about two things. One, whether we need to really close two days for Patriots' Day. And whether we really are required, um, to close, to double-check maybe whether we're really required to close on Saturday, the day before Christmas Eve.
Sure, so Patriots' Day, we did look at all the numbers actually for any of these weekends, and on that Sunday, we get about ninety-five people, when we usually have four hundred-something people coming in the door on a Sunday. So we felt like that would be one to maybe not close, because the other holiday weekends had more people. Um, but I'm not as attached to that. It's more a benefit to the staff, um, to give them another opportunity to have a bit of an extended holiday, um, where, you know, Town Hall staff and other municipal staff get a lot more, like, three-day weekend opportunities and things like that. Um, and we don't, because we're open every single day. Um, so, uh, and then Labor Day has been historically three days, so I don't, that is our one three-day weekend, so that one I would really want to keep, and I would happily give up, you know, Sunday on Patriots' Day or whatever. Um, and then the last working day before Christmas, the way we've done that in the past here, has been closing on Friday and closing on Saturday for half a day each. I don't love that. Um, and our last working day before Christmas, per the town, um, holiday calendar, which we do have to follow because it is their guidelines for our holidays. Um, we, our last working day is Saturday. So it keeps us open the full day Friday, and then just closes us half the day on, on Saturday.
Then there was Sunday and Monday off.
Right, because it's Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Yeah.
I, I, go ahead, Tom.
Uh, the, uh, Patriots' Day, Sunday is not, remember, Sunday is very, is only up one to six, right?
Yeah.
And it's almost entirely part-time, correct?
Yep.
So, it, it's, it's the full-time staff.
It's two days.
Gets the long weekend anyway.
Anyway.
Right. And the other thing is, one of the dates that's not down here is, uh, April nine, Easter.
We, at the bottom of it, you'll see that April ninth, we are going to be open, because it's Easter, it's not a secular holiday, and that's when we didn't feel we needed to have one here.
That's a significant change, that, um, Easter would be closed, and I think I agree with Kim that it is a purely religious holiday and hard to make a case for. Since we don't have any other, uh, other religions beyond Christianity that are actually, um, uh, made into a holiday in our schedule.
Yeah, Christmas is on the town calendar, so that one we don't have a choice about either. Um, but we were open Easter this past year, and it worked out quite well with staffing, so we want to, you know, to Carol's concerns about being open for people who maybe don't celebrate, um, all of the same holidays or whatever, or just people who want to use the library, that felt like a day where we should be open.
Um, my, I thought is, I, I'd love to have a sort of a target, um, that we try to benchmark, that we try to know every year that we have X number of full days closed and X number of partial closings. Um, and so that we, each year, it doesn't become a debate over which days to close so much, um, but instead have a number in mind that we, that, that, that the trustees and the, uh, library leadership feel comfortable with. Um, so perhaps, I don't know, I'm thinking, yes, Tom?
Uh, I, I think that, that one thing is, you know, let's set date, it's difficult to do that. A set number, it's difficult to do that, especially with a calendar change.
Calendar change.
Look at this one, New Year's Day, it's other, right? It's observed on Monday. So we, they have to be, we have to be closed on Monday.
Right.
We could be open on Sunday. You think, how many people are gonna be here on Sunday?
The day, New Year's Eve?
You know?
Oh, New Year's Day.
New Year's Day.
Yeah, it's not New Year's Day, it's Monday. So I, I think, and so the numbers come differently.
Yes, we can, I mean, but it seems to be having a, a, at least a, a target, but, you know, which can be deviated from, you know, one way or the other slightly, um, might be a good thing to have as a sort of a benchmark. Anna?
And, and veterans is the same.
I was just gonna ask.
You have, normally, we, we, we open it up at the tenth.
Yeah.
You know, normally would. But it's not because it's on a Saturday, it bounces back to observed on the Friday. If it was Sunday, it'd be observed on the Monday.
Right, so it varies from year to year. I think we know that.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Right, so, so to have some kind of.
Especially the holidays that, uh, uh, I think in a day, not a Monday.
Yes.
For Veterans' Day, I mean, that, that might be an example where maybe we should stick to the date where it's observed. Because I would imagine that we would get plenty of patronage on that Saturday, uh, if we observe it on a Friday.
It's a state holiday, Veterans' Day, when it falls on the eleventh, people get off, uh, they get off and it's observed, they get the day off, and it's, and it should be closed.
And that one is listed twice on the town's calendar.
Only five, even as a federal holiday, only five states require Veterans' Day to be, employees to be paid for.
I'm happy to get rid of the Sunday Patriots' Day and one of the staff days, I guess, but we have so little opportunity to get all of our part-timers together that the staff days feel much more important to me. But also staffing people on Sunday where we're paying time and a half for so many people, and only to have a hundred people visit when we normally see four hundred-something, um, doesn't feel super great either. But, you know, obviously, that's just my case to make, so.
And we need Columbus Day, which is kind of a fading holiday.
And Indigenous Peoples' Day is not that fading.
Do you all have the copy that has yellow highlighting on it?
Don't have to be. I, I've worked for Harvard University, it does not close on Columbus Day. I believe me, I've had employers, no. Harvard University does not close.
The yellow items are the only ones that are different at all from the town calendar. So if it's not yellow, that means it's on the town calendar, and we don't have a say in whether we're closed or open.
And the asterisks are the ones where they fell on the weekend and then are observed on a different day. Is that right?
Um, yeah. That is what that's supposed to mean. I think that fell off the bottom of the document, sorry.
Can I say something else?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Um, I, you know, I'm of the mind that staff days are really important right now. You know, in, in my organization, all in college where I work, you know, we've been spending a lot of time thinking about how do we bring the community together, um, that works at, at the school after the pandemic, but it's been actually very hard to kind of, you know, think about those social ties, um, that are necessary for an organization to run well. You know, and so I'm, you know, so I think that it's important to, you know, with Ken's discretion and the staff, think about what does that mean for them to ensure that they're building those social ties within, um, within the staff at, at the library. I just wanted to bring my personal perspective on that, um, seeing that similar goal in the organization I'm a part of.
Can I, can I add to that, Kay?
Okay.
And, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm possibly disagreeing with my last comment where I was searching for a possible data cut, but I would simply say that, that, you know, that, that I'm persuaded that the interest of serving the staff and training the staff and, uh, and supporting the staff and giving them, you know, an occasional opportunity for a break that, that, that's much more customary for other town employees, you know. Uh, I'm, I'm inclined to defer to Kim, uh, on this with, with an eye in the future to us, you know, being sensitive that we don't, we don't want to be closing the library, you know, unless it's, you know, reasonably determined it's in the best interest of the library to do so, uh, and we're not, you know, uh, you know, and as Tom mentioned and, and, and as Kim indicated, that, that, th- this occasional, you know, a couple of these extra days are days in which the library is, i- 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 is, is, you know, relatively empty compared to a typical time. So, you know, before I was looking for a solution as to whether there's a reasonable way to, to cut a day, and I'm inclined now, you know, if there was a, a, a vote to just, uh, uh, determine whether we approve the proposed schedule, uh, I, I, I expect I would vote in favor of it.
I would probably drop one day, take the Patriots', uh, two days for Patriots' Day seems for, once again, that's sort of non-holiday. I would probably lose she. Lose this, keep the Sunday open.
Do we know when the school vacation is, uh, in relation to? So, I, I suppose, there are a lot of people that aren't going anywhere for that vacation, and it's kind of nice to have the library open on the weekend, I suppose. You know, that's something I really couldn't say without our thinking, see who came that day, uh, on the Sunday. Patriots' Day, you seem to think that it was low, a low attendance day, or?
I mean, yes, we see like, less than a fourth of the people As any other Sunday, and even the other holiday Sundays, much less, and so it just felt like if that was an area that we were gonna be. Um, able to close, that would be one of the days because it costs a lot of money to staff Sundays, um, but. Again, that's the one that sort of felt like I have the least feelings about, like, honestly, I, we can cut that one and I wouldn't. You know, that's fine.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I think I'd rather, I think overall, cut that one than have you cut out of what you think is an important staff meeting. Um, day.
Same, yeah.
Uh, I don't know, I hadn't heard anything more about you having two staff days until this came out, um, and I don't know if you have. You know, plans yet about, you know, what you hope to do, or, you know, what the focus would be, but that's really your bailiwick. Um, uh, it's just ours to, you know, to approve days closed. I'm particularly interested, not, not that it's our choice, uh, about what you, you want to staff day, unless you're asking for.
Right, I think that, um. They're just so invaluable, I've worked at places that didn't have staff days at all, and then I've worked in places that had, you know, two a year or something like that. And I just think it makes a huge difference, um, in terms of gelling teams across departments, um. Making sure that people are on the same page, it gives you so much opportunity to review policy or talk about new skills, you know, we've been talking a lot about how to handle book challenges. My frontline staff are the people that are gonna have to face those issues, like, in person, when they have, like, in real time, right? Like, I get the luxury of, a report falls on my desk or something, um, and my frontline staff don't get that, but again, we have so many part-time people. You can't get them all together to talk about how to appropriately handle those interactions, um, and to try to de-escalate them, like, we can only. You know, we can only do so much, like, there's a lot of, um, passive training opportunities. But when people are here part-time right now, they're mostly on desk, and so. Building in that opportunity, you know, we're shifting some of that, like, I'm trying to shift away from that as a culture, but that work is. Long and takes a while, um, and I really want my staff to have an opportunity to know that they're gonna get care and training. Um, and that, that is top of mind and a priority, and I think this sends a message that it is.
I, I do.
Sorry, what?
Anna. Uh, I agree that, um, staff days are a necessary investment. I think it's necessary, anything, I've seen organizations that do it more often than twice a year. So this is very, you know, very, it's a good start, we may, we just want to think about down the road, there may be. That's why I put in the words from Kim's map, that in order for, for teams to, to, you know, become cohesive and to feel collaboration. And all the, the benefits that, you know, Kim is describing, there needs to be continuity, that is, that happens outside of the day-to-day work. So, so there's value, now, I, I, having said that, I also see the latter days off particularly. And my, what I was looking at is spreading them out, so there's a couple each month. August doesn't have anything off, which is, uh, interesting, something interesting to note. And November, in this particular case, there are several days, so to me, that is a factor that I'm noticing that on one month, there are several days. There are, that are holidays, right, and some, most of the, most of the months are one or two. So I don't know, there's just, it just hits me a little bit of, uh.
How, how is spacing?
Yeah, like, they're gonna be less available to, to the, to the public in those, for these last two months of the year.
So I believe October seventh came up, but that's the same weekend that's going into, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, I think probably October fourteenth is available. Um.
For staff, for a staff day?
For a staff day, yeah, like, if, if you're talking about, like, you know, switching it out so that September doesn't have so many days off or something.
Yeah, I always wonder if we can spread it out a little.
Yeah, I think there's definitely room to do that, um, I guess I would say. Uh, let's see, oh, I'm looking at the wrong year, sorry, let me switch my phone to look ahead, uh, so. Oh, so sorry, I take back what I said because I was in the wrong.
But there's no staff day in November.
No, that one would not be a good one because we already have a couple days off, um, but in, in terms of October, if we change it to. Um, I would say probably the twentieth, like, October twentieth, we could do.
Instead of, instead of the.
Instead of September twenty-two.
Sorry, twentieth?
Yeah, twentieth.
I mean, I don't have any problem with the staff day, September twenty-two, as stated, um, it does not seem to be a big problem or issue. As far as I can see. I just think in general, we need to be cautious about closing the library. Too many get, I mean, we do serve the public, a lot of people who do not have families, um, or, or somewhat isolated. Do use the library around holidays because that's what they have in their lives. Uh, so, you know, these too many days around things like Patriots' Day, too many days around Christmas. And New Years, you know, these are, we have our population of isolated elders and. Depend on libraries or their life, lifestyle, so. Yes, fair heart.
I have another question, I can, with regard to just discretion that we have for closing on some of these holidays. It isn't clear to me which of these, like, we absolutely have to close on, or which of these are our choices that we're making.
Yes, so the ones that are highlighted are the ones that are choices we get to make, anything that's not, is not. Um, and most of those you'll see are actually just closing a little bit earlier than normal, because when town hall. You know, they don't have to worry about closing early Thanksgiving Eve or something, because they don't staff the evening that night, you know, um. And that's traditionally a really hard night to staff, that kind of thing, and it's what we've typically done historically here as well, um. And then things like the fireworks, you know, they're not affected by that, and so they don't really do a calendar related to places that are open on evenings and weekends.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Kim, a quick question, you know, for the, for the Sunday, New Year's Eve. Do we have any stats for how many people we typically get in on a New Year's Eve when there is New Year's needum, or is there no?
So. Sorry, I can't tell when people are done speaking very easily from the owl, um, so.
All done.
Thank you, Rob, um, so on Sunday, New Year's Eve, I think we've traditionally been closed, or sorry, been open, um. Because New Year's needum has happened, um, I'm not sure what the stats are for actual use, um. But, you know, because we only close if New, or sorry, yeah, no, we close if New Year's needum is happening, right, Dimitri? Am I re, like, thinking right, yes, okay.
As if it's not happening.
As if it's not happening, right, so when it, so traditionally, right, pre-COVID, it was happening, so when we were looking at numbers, there, you know, like. I think people were coming in, but I don't know that we looked at that specifically because we weren't deviating from what we've traditionally done here, but I can go back and look, like. See, so you want to know how many people come in when New Year's needum is happening?
I, I was just wondering if there was any value to considering opening, you know, for some portion of that day, given that. You know, the next two days, the library's closed, the previous week, the library's closed for two and a half days, like it. That seems like, like an opportunity to add some time in during a stretch when, uh, you know, for various holidays, we're, we're closed quite a bit.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I think I. Have been under the impression, and just working from the impression, that New Year's needum probably would happen next year, like, in twenty-three. Because it's a whole other year out, um, but I agree, New Year's Eve, you know, if you're doing stuff before six PM, you're not making it till midnight anyway. So I, you know, I don't have a issue being open on, um, on New Year's Eve.
Especially on Sunday.
Yeah.
It's a Sunday, so we close it like, all day anyway, I agree with that.
Because it's six, yeah.
Carol? Can I go back, you, you seem to be saying, but, um, and now I'm looking at, okay, I don't have the, uh, highlighted version of this. But, um, on Saturday before Christmas, December twenty-third, we're closing early on this proposal. But that is, uh, you have that highlighted, it's something you're choosing, so can we not choose that one?
I have it highlighted because the last working day before Christmas, the way that the town has it, they close at a half day at noon. So I'm actually proposing an hour longer, um, because our, our day is a little bit longer, um. So the discretion part is that it's on Saturday, not just like the Friday that they are doing. Because it doesn't really make sense, the way we did it, you know, what you had approved when Anne did this for you last year was to be open on. Uh, Friday, open till five thirty, but full-time staff were let go as a half day, which I think is a. You know, I don't love that, um, that we would give that kind of preference to half the staff or not even half the staff. And then we are staffing the building to be open till five thirty with just part timers. Um, and then on the Saturday, we're only open until one PM, and only part-time people are working again.
That was, that was on Christmas Eve, that wasn't the day before the day.
No, that was the, yeah, that was the last working day before Christmas, was the Friday, and it was a half day for full-time staff, and then the Saturday. Uh, which would be Christmas Eve, was a half day as well.
Now, the other, other town employees who hope that would get, uh, this yearly. Friday. September twenty-second, they have a half day, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Except for the, except for the RTS.
Yes. And then they come back on Tuesday.
They would have a half day on Saturday, just like we would.
No, they're not, no one's open on Saturdays, except for, like, RTS.
Well, I, yeah, I think so, but. But the other, yeah, the, yeah, the S will be closed, won't be closed on the twenty-second, right? They won't have a half day on the twenty-second.
I'm not sure what RTS does, because they operate outside of town hall hours as well, they're one of the few departments, so they have their own things. Um, but town hall closes at noon on Friday and reopens on Tuesday. And I would argue that we're closer to town hall workers than RTS.
Yeah, but the RTS. The town employees get the last working day off as a half day before Christmas, and we're taking it on Saturday.
Right. I, I don't know what they'll do, Tom, I'm sorry, I, like, I just don't know what they'll do, uh, but our last working day, I, like, I would interpret as Saturday. Because I want us to be open the full day on Friday and have it be more equitably worked, and then have that just one half day.
I hope to amend, Dave, Dimitri?
Can I add one, one thing, just to go back for a second, in terms of the. New Year's Eve and, and needum, New Year's needum, and, and I don't have exact numbers on this, maybe we can go back and look at this, but. When we haven't had New Year's needum and we're open, our numbers were extremely low, and I think that was the d- determination that. If there's no New Year's needum, is, we're, the numbers are so, you know, the numbers aren't there, basically, to be open on that Sunday. Similar to what Kim was saying about one of the other Sundays, so that's anecdotally, and that's what I remember, I've been here a little over five and a half years. Way back, so maybe we, I don't know if we can go back and look at some numbers, but that was the thinking, I think, so like Kim said, if New Year's needum is to happen. That's one factor, but if it's not. Not a busy place, and, you know, especially since we're paying people time and a half. If we're not getting the four hundred people and we're getting less than a hundred, that's something to weigh up in terms of operationally. Whether you want to do that.
Confused, honestly, the last day before last working day has me very confused.
Before Christmas?
Before Christmas, because this year, we're open on Christmas Eve until, until, uh, one o'clock. So why is it the day before that we have to be, uh, you know, restricted hours? I just don't quite understand that.
I don't see that, Carol.
It's the other way, it's the day before.
Yeah, you're reading it wrong.
Twenty-fourth, we're closed all day.
It's open till one PM.
That's December twenty-third.
Yeah, December twenty-fourth, it's a twenty-two calendar, on the twenty-twenty-two. This year says, we're open on Christmas Eve until one o'clock. Uh, so it just doesn't ring true that we have to be closed on the twenty, uh, in twenty-twenty-three, that we have to be closed. The day before.
So, let's, let's try, let's try an amendment that addresses that, let's try an amendment to this holiday calendar, which, for example. Um, where we do work, um, we are open on Sunday, just before Patriots' Day, and we are open on. Um, two days before Christmas, December twenty-third, we are open regular hours on both those days. Can we have a mo- motion to that effect and discuss?
I didn't, I didn't.
Move this along, here. So the motion would be, um, to amend this proposed calendar for twenty-twenty-three to, um. Reinstate the Sunday before Patriots' Day as a regular open day, and also reinstate. December twenty-three as a regular open day.
You can't do that, though, um, the last working day is on the town calendar, and they don't include Christmas Eve on the town calendar. Because they're not open since it falls on a weekend. Like, I don't.
But our last working day before Christmas is the twenty-fourth.
I'm talking about in twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, we can, we already approved this year.
Yeah, you're not talking about this year, we're talking about. Twenty-twenty-three.
Well, we're doing it this year, so I don't know why we can't do it next year.
So Carol's pointing out that it, we did do it this year, so.
So you would like to interpret the last working day before Christmas as Christmas Eve? It'd be open on Christmas Eve, from one to six.
Not till six, but if you're gonna close early, close early on Christmas Eve, not.
We're only open one to six, when would we close, though? That would be my concern.
Could make it five, to give people a little break for one hour.
Yeah, that doesn't make, I don't think that makes sense, but.
It gets it.
Just.
But why do we have to be closed at early on the twenty, the twenty-third, I guess that's really where I'm focusing, it's the twenty-third.
I think it's actually because we're the only town department, except for police and fire, but it opens on Sunday. Right, we're the only ones that open Sunday, so that becomes the last working day, but it doesn't for anybody else. And then it's a town, it's a town thing that says the last working day before Christmas is a half day.
And in that, in the case of the library, that's this.
And you have to remember, Sunday openings happen, you know, because of demand, but we're the only place that has. Sunday opening in the, in, in the town.
And so where do you go with that, I guess I don't.
I, I, you have to just weigh that, just have to weigh in to affect it, and that would be, if. It was, it was, the town bylaw was never, you know, the personnel bylaw, the holiday, was never meant to ha- handle Sunday as a working day.
I think, too, like, getting caught up, like, Sundays might be a full day, but Saturday's only a half day, and so really what you're talking about is about the same amount of hours of. Closure as compared to this year.
So would someone like to make a proposal, make a motion to address the, this debate and sum it up?
We, we, we made a motion, right?
I, has not even seconded.
I'll second.
All right, so discuss.
Clear, I'm sorry, but your, your motion, Kay, would, would, would have been to remove a day that Kim is saying we can't remove.
Yeah, I wouldn't agree with that.
Oh, yeah, you can do that, yeah.
Well, okay, so we're voting against that motion, I'm hearing, all in favor. But let's, withdraw the motion. Yeah, withdraw the motion, so can someone come up with a viable motion to address? Withdraw the motion. So can someone come up with a viable motion to address this calendar?
Well, Kim seems to be willing to have that Sunday.
Patriots' Day.
Patriots' Day, like, what day, what day is Patriots' Day?
That would be the Sunday, April sixteen.
They'd be open, right? Sixteen? Right? A staffing problem, but, you know, that would be fine, you know?
And we've determined that we can't stay open on two days, the day, two, two days before Christmas. For some reason that's not clear because we're doing it this year, but not, now we have, are led to understand we can't do it again.
We're doing it this year because of the way the holidays fall. But we're, we're allowing our full-time staff to be able to be off on the Friday before Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. What this does is say, no, everyone works that full day, the Friday, because that's not our last working day before Christmas. The Saturday is because Christmas Eve would be on the town calendar if it were on a Sunday or a day where they have time off. Like, or would be able to give time off. But it's essentially the same amount of hours off and closed for Christmas as this year.
I guess, I guess we have to go with it. I, I honestly, I don't, I haven't read the bylaw. I don't know, you know, for myself what, you know, if that's the way it has to be interpreted or it's just a way that we've chosen to interpret it, but I would.
It's never been a problem, but I'm sure it would be a, I'm not sure what I think they've. But you have to remember, one time in the old personnel bylaw, librarian, library staff, personnel staff, got, because it was Saturday, got extra vacation. That was my first added on, I don't know if they stopped that. They used to get more vacation time than other employees if they worked, because they, they, they worked Saturday.
Okay, good background.
There was no Sunday at all at that time.
Do we have a motion now? Or would someone like?
Did you with?
I would draw my previous motion.
So I, I guess I would move at this point to amend this proposed calendar for twenty-twenty-three to remove as a holiday the day before Patriots' Day, April sixteenth, which is a Sunday.
I would second that.
Second?
With just one, one brief thing to mention. You know, totally understand the reason why many of these holidays are here. But one thing I do want to just kind of express is, you know, for twenty-twenty-four, we may not be having, you know, some of these observation days. I just wanted to make clear that, you know, we, we may not need to have this many days off for some of these holidays based on when it was. So I just don't want this to be a baseline that, yeah, we're gonna take off like, you know, two or three days for New Year's and two and a half days for Christmas, that we're, we're not locked into that. And we may be able to in fact have fewer days off for those holidays depending on how they fall during the week next, the following year.
That's what I mean. This is the calendar year with a Saturday and two Sunday holiday, I mean, the other day and the other one.
And I still think that it would be a good idea for us to have a target number of days around which we try to work so that we, there's no creep in the wrong, one direction or the other. So anyway, any more discussion?
The only ones we can deal with are the ones that are highlighted as well. Everything else is mandated by the town and the town.
Right, so there's a fair number of ones there to, to, we have a fair amount of discretion. Further discussion?
Can I, can I cede any time for discussion to Kim on arguments for this Sunday?
For what?
I'd like to see any time I have for discussion to Kim to, to explain what, you know, what are the benefits of having a Sunday off?
Which Sunday? Sorry.
Sorry, the Sunday before Patriots' Day, which is what they're.
Oh, yeah. So when the town makes the calendar, which is what, you know, we have to do the bare minimum of that, right? Town hall is not open weekends and nights and our staff are here seven days a week. We're here nights. We're here many more hours than other town employees generally unless they are in very different types of jobs. And so when you look at town hall employees, they get, I forget what it was. It was something like eight or nine three-day weekends a year and we get pretty much none. Like Labor Day is the only time where we have that. So it's kind of a, just a way to sort of give people a little bit of the benefit, especially our part-timers, which have historically been relied upon to keep us open at holiday times, that there's been a lot of discussion around not doing. And I think they deserve to have the time that they can count on to be with their family for different things as well. I don't have a big attachment to that Sunday in particular for Patriots' Day. It's more the operational piece of it, really. Like, it's not, it's kind of the cost benefit of it. It's a hundred people coming in quickly in and out is not the same as any other Sunday where we have closer to five hundred or four hundred, you know, like four hundred fifty or something like that it was for pretty much every single Sunday, including a lot of the holiday weekend Sundays. And so when I was trying to think about how to balance giving those staff members an opportunity to also have more of a weekend or something that they can plan off because they are part-time people, also don't get vacation time or anything. So if they take vacation, they're unpaid. So having opportunities like that in there helps them to be able to plan a vacation, maybe where they are not missing a shift. They're able to just do something like that. So it's kind of a balance of both. Like, that seemed like the ideal one to take away if we were going to be generous to the staff. But it's not a necessity.
I'm sorry, this is taking, taking much longer than you had anticipated on the agenda. Am I correct that there's just one full-time staff person on on the weekends, such as Sundays or?
No.
Any full-timers are on, working on the weekend?
There would be several on Saturdays and on Sundays, there's none. Sundays are the part-time people, like I mentioned. So they don't get any paid vacation time or anything.
Right, and so they won't get paid for that day if you make it a holiday. It's not an option for them to get paid.
Right. They could potentially come and work a different day of the week or something if they wanted. But in terms of giving them an opportunity to kind of have a celebratory time or bookend a weekend to do a longer trip or something, that's where it becomes a benefit. But again, I'm not attached to that Sunday. It's, it's more of an economics thing of the.
High-time workers don't get hours. But what they do on Sunday, they get time and a half, right?
Mm-hmm.
They get time and a half.
That's a benefit.
So for some people, it would be a, a distraction, not be able to work on that day. I, you know, I suppose that's the other side.
If you're part-time, you probably want hours and certainly hours.
What day it is, though. That's the, people go away, a lot of people go away for a vacation.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as a manager, I'm aware of when we have difficulty staffing and not. And some of these are more difficult to staff, the holiday weekends. So we don't see a lot of people clamoring to be there on holidays. Or when things are bookended by a holiday, that is a particularly popular one. Like, when we talk about the Christmas stuff, I don't think we could staff Christmas Eve if we wanted to. I think that would be a really big operational challenge.
I think Patriots' Day also is, is not a, only two states celebrate Patriots' Day.
I know. That's why, you know, I think Patriots' Day is probably a good place to cut back.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we have a motion. And a second. Had discussion. I think I'm ready, we're ready for the roll call. All in favor of?
Will you remind?
What's that?
The motion to your.
Yes, I believe the motion was proposed by Carol to adopt this proposed holiday calendar for twenty-twenty-three with the exception of the Sunday, April sixteenth, will be deleted from the closed days on the count.
Oh, so we're, we're accepting the holiday with the, with the present amendment, not just, we're not just voting on the.
We are. We have an amendment.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether I sent to adopt the calendar as written, except for that. I think I did not.
No, you just proposed the amendment.
To allude, to change this, but we also want to adopt, whether it's one motion or two, we might as well make it one. So may I amend my motion to accept this, except for deletion of that one day of April sixteenth, the day before Patriots' Day.
Okay, we have that.
I'll second that.
We second that. And all in favor? I.
I.
All opposed? Adopting.
Aren't we glad we're not, we're in Suffolk County, we have to deal with evacuation day.
Oh, my God. Yeah, this is the longest. Okay, we did it. Yay. Now we have something, the really important thing, which is the budget.
Yeah.
Cam, are you ready for, to give us your budget overview?
Yeah, so I sent out the DSR ones, which, you know, I think probably we're used to having accompanied by a lot of other requests and you'll see a distinct lack of other requests in this. This really is a maintenance budget. It is intended to kind of keep pace with, you know, it's not level funding, obviously. It is an increase of, I think it was three point four percent overall from this past year to cover staffing cost increases, like the schedule changes that happened, as well as increases to different line items, as you'll see reflected in the budget statement. You know, a lot of this is in here, but really we are seeing that people truly are demanding all of the mediums that we have, all the formats, physical and digital, and we're trying to really balance what those, what those needs are and keep pace with it. I think that, you know, with the demand for hybrid programming and things like that, we are likely to need to figure out staffing levels or whether staff can be relied upon to always help with outside meetings, things like that. We're looking at, obviously, the space planning study having a big impact here overall in the future. But part of, part of the on-the-horizon statement that you hopefully have all gotten a chance to read is really bringing some of this to light and laying the groundwork for the finance committee and for the town to be able to see these things are on our radar. These are things that are coming up that are concerned, but there are no direct budget requests for this year because I'm still very much looking at how we can reallocate our current level of funding to more appropriately staff the building and kind of streamline different processes and things too. So I didn't, I don't have, I didn't want to make requests that I don't actually full-throatedly believe in. You know, we were able to essentially create a part-time reference position with hours that we already have and things like that. So I want to see how some of those things play out over this year and probably will have some different staffing requests in next year's budget request. I also went through line by line with Jenna, who, you know, Jenna has the, the like everyday working knowledge of all these different line items and account numbers and what things get paid out of which account in a much more meticulous, just in-depth understanding of what I have, where I'd have to like look it up or figure that out. So we went through with a fine-tooth comb over many days and tried to really make the starting budget of each line item reflective of our, our actual spending within that line item. We do have bottom-line control. So for salaries, we can spend salary money on full-time or part-time. That, you know, the, the town doesn't tell us you have to spend the amount that says it's for full-time on just full-time, right? We have that bottom-line authority. And the same goes for our expenses budget, which a lot of the budget statement is, you know, it pertains to. So oftentimes towards the end of the year, we might find that we have ender spent in the postage line and we're going to use some of that money to make us whole somewhere else. So we went through and tried to adjust the starting amounts for those different line items to actually really be reflective of our actual spending use. There are, I don't know. Let's see. You know, we definitely talked about expanding services, the different accomplishments we've had this year. I felt like that was really important to bring up the different collections and expanding like world languages and those types of offerings that really do reach all of Needham. And talking about our strategic plan and our space planning study a little bit so that they're aware of kind of what's coming. So again, this was really just a maintenance budget. It's pretty straightforward, I think. A lot of it comes from, you know, like the salaries information that comes from Dave mostly and then from our calculation of part-time hours, which, you know, I, I did at our new schedule rate and all of that. And then we also had some capital items that were put in or not some, really just the library technology plan is the big one. That's a three-year plan because Danielle and I went through and really remapped our replacement needs and things like that based on what we were able to accomplish with the last five-year plan and where we got to because of the pandemic and supply chain shortages and chip shortages and all the different things. So what we felt like we could actually accomplish, and we ended up with a three-year plan instead of a five-year plan, which is totally fine per the town and gives us a lot of flexibility to then map as we go. And then I did have to submit, and I'll send this out, I had to submit it today. They asked me to also give a capital funding request, what they call a future form. It's the same thing that you see for the capital, for the library technology plan, but essentially it's just the first page and it just says, hey, we're doing a space planning study and we expect there to be costs from this with no costs associated included on that document. So I did submit that too and I'll send that out to you all as well once Katie has kind of approved it or I get the word that it's considered final. I met with Dave Davison and Kate Fitzpatrick and Katie King and several other people and with Dimitri and Jenna to review the budget recently and they all seemed pleased. So, you know, I'm hoping that FinCom will be just as generous. But yes, I, you know, I'm happy to take questions. I just, I don't have as much to say about it. That's not already in the, in the written report because it really just is a maintenance budget.
Congratulations. I'm putting together a really great first budget, Kim, of your own.
Thanks.
Appreciate all the hard work. And Jenna, thank you.
Yeah, big thanks to Jenna.
Any discussion?
Hi, Carol. I just want to say that I think that the it was a really good way to approach this as let's straighten out our own budget and make use of what we have, show, show what's upcoming, really educating the planning board, excuse me, not planning board. As to what is likely coming down the pipe and future requests. I think it was just really handled very, very well, very well written towards that, towards that end.
Yeah, I really wanted to be conservative with it. I mean, not too conservative, right? Like, we obviously have increases. We, you know, need more money for different things. But I, I know that down the road, not too distant future, we'll have a lot of requests related to the space planning study in particular and some additional staffing needs, I'm sure. So I think strategically, this puts us in a. So I think strategically, this puts us in a good position to just show that, you know, we are being really judicious and really trying to do the most with what we already have and and figure out whether we can reallocate things that we already have to serve the community better. Obviously, I don't, you know, we don't want to get, I don't want to be too good at that because we can't always do more with less, but they're not giving less. And so I just, I think it puts us in a good position for the next couple of fiscal years.
I have a question. In terms of the technology plan, your plan is is fine. I just wanted to know if you I'm sure you've thought about this. Do we have the technology we need in terms of the book handling and the circulation? You know, I know the library technology is always changing. I don't know a whole lot about it. I just want to make sure you folks feel confident that you're thinking about and asking for what you're going to need to stay up to date on the whole handling of of library circulation.
I do, yeah. So the there's two things I want to mention. Let me, so process wise, this library plan, the technology plan, any SIP, like the capital improvement plans, they get approved year by year. And so e- even if this got approved now, we're not beholden to the numbers that are there or the things that are specified within the specific year until it's voted upon at town meeting the year prior, right? So we have an opportunity to adjust as we go with that. It's really a planning tool for the town to see kind of what's coming and we are definitely, you know, forward thinking, but the exclusion of a materials handler is not an oversight. I've worked in, you know, I worked at the Newton Free Public Library when when they began RFID ing their materials, which is, you know, putting in the little radio tags and all of that and got an automated sorter. I think there's a lot of mixed feelings about RFID. The places who have it, I feel like really drank the Kool-Aid and feel like it's the best thing. But it doesn't save staff time typically. It just reallocates their the use of staff. And there's like, there's still a lot of materials handling that has to happen. The benefit really, I don't know, there, I think there were a lot of promises made with RFID that we haven't seen come to fruition, like being able to wave a wand as you walk down the stacks and pull the paging list each morning or things like that. And that just doesn't exist. So it's really the only true benefit is maybe slightly more accuracy overall, which I don't think that we have a problem with in Needham anyhow. But that and the benefit to the patron of just seeing it checked off their account right away. And the request that was in last year's budget that I chose to not defend and not actually ask for once I started was a materials handler that only read barcodes, which if there was a concern that we are going to be behind without RFID, getting a handler that only does barcodes just didn't feel like a like a good move. It was not worth the money to do that. I think we still probably want to explore the cost of RFID, but it's extremely expensive. And again, the benefits are not that great. Where I think with all the other things that we have lined up in terms of space planning and things, like our patrons really love all the interaction with humans in our library and I I don't want to tamper with that too much by starting RFID and having everyone kind of switch to self checkout and things like that. Or, you know, handing a book back to whatever, to a machine. I'm not opposed to it totally, but it's something that it's not there because we didn't feel like it was something we wanted to pursue at this time.
Okay, good explanation, Kim. Rob, that's a question.
So real quick, it is more of a comment, but as Kim noted, you know, based on the outcome of the space planning study, we might have some bigger requests in in the next couple of years. In which case, you know, many of us will be shifting into advocacy mode on that. One thing, and I just apologize for the non-Germanias, this doesn't have to do with this budget, but it'd be good if we could start compiling statistics on the funding of the library renovation back in 2006, because I believe actually it was a relatively small amount of town dollars that was spent on that and that might be something that we'd like.
Sorry, to to look at what, I didn't catch that sentence.
Sorry, it was quite the run on sense, but if we can get some figures about how much the town actually spent, because in the town, there's this notion that this is a new facility. The town spent a lot of money to build this. But in reality, you know, it's 15 years old, so there are changes. And I believe the actual amount out of pocket for the town was very low relative to the projects we're looking at now.
Well, we got significant money.
Right.
From what?
They bought the library mission. And also the other thing that the town didn't like that we did. We use state funds. I mean, we use we use state funds accumulating old gear or that. We include that to do the preliminaries.
So we accumulate state aid to to fund the.
We get we usually get so much state aid, we can put it aside. A little, but then we put aside, then we tie it at home. Feasibility stuff like that.
Okay.
The town, the town didn't like that. We came to the town, they were. This is already done? We haven't, the town hadn't acted on it, so.
He didn't.
Didn't have to act up.
Okay, interesting, something that.
But that would never happen again.
That would never happen again. Okay. I was gonna say, that's a good strategy. Carol.
Yeah, as I recall, when Kate and Dave came with their, with their annual meet, annual meet with us a couple of years ago, they were the ones that said, you know, they would not recommend our going forward without going through town meeting. Rob, you probably remember. For them. But but they did not think that would be a good strategy to repeat. Because we need towns by and we need town, we need not only FinCom, we need the, you know, town leading members being aware of this being afoot and and some things like they didn't ask for even bigger.
Good, good background. Good question, Rob. Other, yes, Eric.
I just have one comment about the the technology planning, because I I know you you've, I don't know what is factored into the estimates there for replacing, especially the the computers and monitors on those things. And I just wanted to make a note that, you know, we've had a lot of advances in ergonomics when it comes to digital technology. And I want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about, you know, like the quality of displays and things that we're having staff use on a regular basis to reduce eye strain as well as the quality monitors that patrons might be using on displays around the facility. Just because we, you know, we're learning more and more about kind of, you know, what does it mean to have a good digital technology that, you know, doesn't cause I want to make sure that we're thinking about that when we make those technology requests in the future. That might increase those budgets slightly.
Yeah, Danielle's really good about that. You know, especially with the chip shortage, there's been a lot of conversations every time we want to get a new computer or do whatever. It's constantly a, well, we could get this other one, but it's the resolution is good and blah, blah, blah. And like, you know, she's extremely well, you know, I think tuned into that, which is great. And also she's here on this meeting, so she'll hear you and it's heard. Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, I was really pleased to see a new DSR one document, Kim. One of the the first page that that you mentioned, the the hybrid option, you know, you are estimating that it won't go away. I think it's important if we are really serious to as is in the strategic plan, having community outreach, the EFP component of it, that hybrid is a possibility to to reach more more folks. There's always, oh, is it virtual? Oh, I can't go. Or even folks who want to be part of the community virtually. So so this hybrid I would like us to continue to to keep that present and live, the hybrid opportunities that we can leverage with the technology, with programming, with partnerships.
Yeah. So do we need to vote on this budget proposal going to the town?
No, this is just a presentation.
It's already gone in. What, I didn't mean that anymore.
Were you two?
We used to go. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Got it. We no longer do that. Okay. All right. So that's good.
And one, sorry, I meant to mention also just quickly, FinCom expects to start meeting the beginning of December. They were thinking since our budget is very straightforward, they might want us to be one of their first. I have I have some health stuff that's come up and I'm not going to probably be super available the beginning of December for that. So I will certainly let you all know when we are scheduled. But I, you know, last year they had us one of the last ones as a benefit to me being new. And this year they felt this is so straightforward and they didn't really have a lot of questions about our budget that they wanted to have us be one of the first. So I just want to prepare you all. That could be in December at some point.
Are you, are you, you are going to be available or you're feeling like?
I'm not going to be available the first week for sure because their first meeting is December 7th and they were talking about having us then. I haven't been formally asked. But it did come up in conversation and I won't be here for that day. And I'm I'm not going to know yet about the rest of it, but I expect we'll probably go in December.
It Wednesday?
Yeah, they meet Wednesday nights. I think every Wednesday night through the end of the season essentially. So I I would be surprised if we don't go in December though. Just as a heads up.
So I would attend along with you and are there other, doesn't the chair meet with?
It's just that, yeah, the chair. Yeah, the chair and I think one other person can come. I forget how that worked. Was it the vice?
We should all go, but.
No, you don't, you don't all go.
We decided that would, it wasn't threatening, but it wasn't, it wasn't comfortable to Kim, right?
That's true. Remember, we did go. We would all leave, show up and sit in the back row and listen. We lurk in the back row. Okay, yeah, I know. We had a lot of discussion. Okay, so now we are on to the art appraisal update.
Oh. No, I, didn't I take that off? I'm sorry. Did I send the wrong agenda?
Mine has it on there, but.
Oh, I think that's the agenda from when you and I were discussing. Yeah.
So basically, just to say, Colleen is coming back for the end of this month, right, to do another meeting at the library? Has she been in touch with you at all?
Yes, but that's not on the official agenda. So I had just mentioned it earlier in the meeting. She's coming back mid-November to work with Danielle and Danielle has put together all the different folders and documentation that we have. I think the next item was the strategic plan update. Do you want?
Tom has a question. Yes. What about antique? You're watching it?
And she was.
She's on it?
2007. But whatever it was, it was a picture of a dog. You know how they go, now what's worth that? Her phrase went down.
It went down.
Not, not, not that it didn't. It had to do with her phrases.
It's gone down. Okay, well. Yes, dogs are less valuable now.
I'm so sorry. The custodians just texted me, they need to be setting up the room at 9:30 for a program that starts at 9:00 AM tomorrow. So just to keep that in mind.
All right, so. Move on to the strategic planning update. Kim, do you have anything?
Yeah, so, yes, we had our five focus groups and Kelly's compiling the feedback received. We just added another virtual focus group for parents, which is November 16th at 7:00 PM. And it's just virtual, so you register on our website on the calendar of events. The survey was published and publicized within the building and on social media and our website and we'll be sharing it out a bit more, you know, to the different liaisons, to boards and different committees to pass along. So please spread that around. That's definitely part of the advocacy role that you can help with is spreading that to everyone you know that's in Needham.
More for parents, that's it, right?
The focus group, the surveys for everybody. Yeah, surveys for everybody. The focus group will just be for parents because that had, you know, just two attendees in person and the virtual one had the, you know, the open one that was virtual had the most attendance. I think they had like 20 something folks. And so we're hoping to do, you know, a virtual option might be more feasible for for parents. So we just, you're a little bit more from them.
I just wondered, how long is this? Do you have a closing date for when you're ending the survey?
We don't. Kelly is going to monitor and see kind of what the results look like and see in terms of our timing of wrapping up things, when we'll need to close it. We're going to leave it up at least through the end of November.
Is the survey linked on the website?
Yes, it is.
Rob and Jay, anything from you guys as the strategic plan advisory group?
No.
Okay. Good. Okay, inclusion resolution, anything for that this month? Not hearing anything?
I was just going to say Veronica Robles was a delight, you know, brought a delightful program with a lot of dancing.
Including Carol.
Very little from this one, but it's been a lot of years since I did a holiday talk at TIO. Anyway. But it was really a very good, a very nice program.
I heard lots of good comments.
Yes, even Josh Levy from the Pink Month came by to say congratulations.
Did he bring his kids?
His son, his son was enjoying himself. So that was like, oh, remember us in December?
Yeah.
Okay, so on to the library arts and exhibits.
One tiny thing. Kim, I'm going to send you a, there was another event on the 30th that was done in conjunction with equal justice needed for families. It was on the 30th. It was story time. So also that that's also part of the inclusion equity inclusion resolution that is not here. Okay?
So our library arts and exhibits committee.
You know, it's a little, it's been kind of difficult to pin down our roster for next year, just starting January because actually, I think really because the reference desk has been short handed and and Dale hasn't had the time to devote to pinning it down. But she told me tonight that she has now pinned down February, it looks like a really great exhibit by someone named Larry Flipper, an artist from Maine, who does these really large paper mosaics. Think like quilts almost, they look like, it should be terrific. Yeah, and so I would ask for approval of that artist, a very colorful, large, flashy, in the depths of winter. It seemed like a good idea.
So we we have everything approved through the end of December, right? And then we have him through January?
Not yet. She's working on it. She's offered that actually to this woman that we have previously.
What's there now is through the end of the year?
Yes. But for January, she, Dale has offered as one of possible months, January for this artist Lori. But for January, she, Dale has offered as one of possible months, January for this artist, Lori Ogden, who does these bird bird.
But they're small.
She's found a way that she can hang them on the wall as opposed to only in the cases where it gets anticipated, the result. And so that will probably either be January or June, but hopefully January, that will come that down.
Okay.
So so we've already actually approved that artist, but Larry Clifford is the one that I would like to have your approval.
Do you have any image of this?
You know, I, you know, if you'd rather see the image, we can do that next time, and I will have the longer list, and maybe that's a better approach.
Yeah, unless you need it tonight. I mean, I think it's always good to see at least one example of what the type of artwork.
Okay, that's great. And so I will try to have a much longer, fuller list, you know, for the first half of the year at least after December meeting. And we will be having another art committee meeting in December. To finish up the rest of the year, we'll see.
Well, the exhibits up there right now, it's it's great, colorful, big and cheerful, right?
Very nice mix. And there will be, I think it's this Thursday, there's going to be the judging of that.
Yeah, need a large sausage.
And the Needham Art Association, both of the, the judge and someone who's going to give a presentation that they're making this Thursday. But it's really very, very nice mix of things right now, November, December.
And thank you, Carol. And then we have the MacGyver series.
Which is Veronica Robles' event.
Which we've done through the year.
Probably, yeah, we'll probably do one more in the spring, some other.
Friends in the library, do we have anything to report? Jay, are you still our liaison?
Yes, and we're very close, actually, to having something official to report as far as this big anniversary event, but it's 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 not final, and so I'm reluctant to make any false promises. Hopefully, we'll have good news about a big event to 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 celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Friends and maybe also to celebrate the foundation and all to benefit the library. So hopefully, next, next next report, next month, we'll we'll have some exciting news to share.
There are going to be some fundraising component to the 50th anniversary?
Yeah, I think the whole point is is to is to have a ticketed event on in the second floor of the town hall, that that nice room there and all for the purpose, primary purpose, not only of community bonding and building for the town, but but mostly to 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 support the library and raise some money to to help support the library, so. But I I had hoped I'd have good news to share today, but it's not quite ready. Make any false
Ink is in dry.
False predictions.
All right, Tom?
I have, I I saw two good, real good programs. They're very well attended. One is the Pony Boys.
That was great.
And the, the Iranian-American woman, awesome, well, she was
They recorded it.
That's what I wanted to know, because I couldn't go.
That's what Sue said, yeah.
Yeah, that conflicted with the diversity summit.
Yeah.
And I originally signed up for the Diversity Summit, and then I tried to do it, you know, I said, I can zoom at the beginning, a keynote, they come over here, and then we got on.
I I was out of town for that event, Tom. Was there a good, a good turnout?
Yes, it was a very good turnout. I'd say there was three quarters full.
Okay, because Pony Boys was also an excellent turnout. It was really nice.
That was a great story. Okay, if you want to learn something about Needham history, watch Pony Boys. You can see it like on Netflix now, I think. So, okay, so Library Foundation of Needham, Beth.
Right, I think that probably, we believe in nine. Wasn't meeting, happy to give a brief update. So the inscription is going well, the fundraising drive, annual appeals will be going out. So there was a elephant at a presence harvest fair with successful. There are two upcoming programs on November 15th. Author Matt Robinson will be speaking about lions, tigers, robots.
Oh, yeah.
And then on Sunday, November 27th, at 2:00 PM, there will be Women in World Jazz.
Matt Robinson, C local, you know?
I did not know.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now on the foundation.
That's the update.
Who is on the FinCom is now a part of the Elephant Board.
Oh, I remember the name.
Yeah. So, Lilin. Which is in Crane Camp as I need to
See.
Okay, so that pretty much wraps it up. Except for trustee comments, if there are any.
Yes. Last time I mentioned that I in 1988, I wrote something about the future of the library.
1988, okay.
1988, it celebrates the 100th anniversary of life.
Yeah, that was the 100th anniversary of life in 1988.
With the 100th anniversary.
Okay.
And one, one, one trustee wrote about the his article with the paper. At that time. One trustee wrote about the history of libraries, one told about the library now, and I told about the library.
Library, oh, we'll have to see how many of your predictions come true.
Yes. I wouldn't know. The thing, listen, I did, one thing I didn't anticipate when the library replaced.
Okay. All right, Kim's breaking new ground that even Tom envisioned. Okay, I mean, well, we'll be happy to read this stuff.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Nice to have a piece of history.
They went for Jay.
In our hands.
I'll put it in the mailbox.
And any further trustee comments? No?
Everybody vote.
Yeah, that's, yes. It was election day, but that's a
Yes.
So, okay, so, um, all in favor of adjournments for tonight? Say aye.
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 Y'all both. I realized I didn't do a motion. Didn't do the motion.